Alright, it is seven o'clock on Monday, March 8th. Welcome to the regular city council meeting here for the city of Albernett. We will start by calling this meeting to order. And our first order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd like, please have our flag on the wall or behind me. And I will lead us up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Counselor Trump?
Present.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Present.
Counselor Shawn?
Present.
Counselor Menson?
Present.
TJ Leff?
Present.
Hi, and you have an open. That leads us right into our next actual item, which is oath of office for TJ. So for those who weren't here, TJ got appointed on our last meeting to fill our vacant council seats. So it will now be my honor to give you the oath of office. So if you please rise, I think they're gonna make you come here. So you can picture things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, alright. Test your memory.
Okay.
I, Thomas Joseph West II,
I, Thomas Joseph West II,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa,
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa,
and that I will faithfully and impartially,
I will faithfully and impartially,
to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability,
discharge all the duties of the Office of City Council in the city of Albernett.
Discharge.
Discharge all the duties,
discharge all the duties,
of the Office of City Council,
of the Office of City Council,
in the city of Albernett, Iowa,
in the city of Albernett, Iowa,
as now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Couldn't remember all that.
Definitely.
I did. Kinda having a little fun. Alright, clerk, any changes to the agenda? No changes, so without, I will seek motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Bozenberg, seconded by Menson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Our sheriff was here. We neglected to let him know that our meeting changed, so if he didn't quite have a report ready for us, I'm sure they will get it to Danielle on our regular day, which is Thursday, and we'll make sure that gets up. So, no sheriff's report tonight. Number seven, public hearing for the proposed property tax levy fiscally due July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2022. Do you need a motion to open the public hearing? No, okay. I'm hearing, I don't, because we are required to do it, and therefore you cannot say no. So we are now in public hearing for the proposed property tax levy. We do have proof of publication of the max levy notice, correct?
Yes, it's in the news, one newsletter on, uh, it was in the newsletter on March 27th. The last two, I'm sorry. Do I have it? What was the date? Was it? Oh, well, I have a copy of it in the packet. This is the one that I accidentally forgot to post on the website, so it'll probably be a first time around. I hope, it was again in the one newsletter on March?
Eighteenth.
What?
You said you submitted on the eighteenth?
Yes, so it would've been on the twenty-second, twenty-third.
Twenty-third was a Tuesday.
Twenty-third was a Tuesday. It was in the one newsletter on February 23rd.
Perfect, so that is thirteen days, so we're within the ten to twenty. So, thank you for confirming that. Alright, so we open it now. Are there any questions from the public regarding the max tax levy? Hearing none? We can close the public hearing. Oh, did we receive any written questions or comments?
We did not.
Thank you. Alright, with that, close the public hearing. And then I will seek a motion on the resolution to approve the FY 22 maximum property tax levy in the new packet. Moved by Schatz.
Second.
Seconded by Trump. Any further discussion? Need a roll call on this?
Yes. Counselor West?
Aye.
Counselor Menson?
Aye.
Counselor Shawn?
Aye.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Shawn?
Aye.
So the record reflects the motion, carries to none. Alright, that leads us to item eight on the agenda, which is the mayor's report. I don't have a lot. I do want to give a reminder of our recently updated ATV, UTV ordinance. The weather's getting nicer. We've already noticed some activity on the streets. And just a reminder, the definition of ATV or UTV requires that it have between three to eight wheels, that you're a licensed driver and you must follow all traffic laws. So that includes our posted speed limits, as well as the flow of traffic. So you can't be driving erratically on city streets, whether it be an ATV or UTV. For sure, we've seen some dirt bike traffic. Those would not be allowed unless they are licensed with the DOT as a motorbike and are street legal. They are otherwise not allowed in town. I will say, our ordinances have not been updated on the website because we're currently working to recodify everything. And so we're gonna do all of that at once. So if you need a copy of that ordinance, contact City Hall and we can make sure you get that. For the council, an update from emergency management. With the closure of Dwayne Arnold. So I don't know if you're aware, Dwayne Arnold was scheduled to close in October of this year, I believe. But due to the duration and the damage they sustained, they actually closed immediately following that. So they're currently going through their shutdown process. EMA is preparing for Dwayne Arnold to donate the outdoor warning sirens to the county, purely as a donation. And so now there is discussion about who picks up the maintenance on those sirens. We don't have any in town, so we would be impacted by what the county chooses to do. The county board of supervisors at this time has not taken any action. They've requested that EMA go back and get a firmer quote on what maintenance is going to cost. And there is the potential that they will come back and ask cities to pay their portion of that maintenance contract. We don't know what that looks like yet. It did not make their current budget. So if the board of supervisors does choose to pick it up, it would be a budget amendment for them for this year. So I will keep you all posted as I know anything. But that is one more expense we don't have today that we may need to keep sights on, so. Are there any questions on that?
Well, how does that work during the county?
Um, they would look at proximity to the towns and split the costs that way. We don't know yet. There's still a lot of discussion. So they're supposed to be estimating, you know, how far those sound carry, which ones are servicing Albernett, even if they're not within city limits. Or they may potentially move them within city limits type of thing, so. With Dwayne Arnold, there were, because they were for the nuclear event, they had other regulations about where sirens had to be. And now if they're purely for a weather event, that those get relaxed a little bit, so they can move some things around there. So I'll keep you posted on that. I had asked at our last meeting that everyone be ready to talk about what we want to do with the new, or with the old fire station. We've had a delay in getting moved out, and we'll get to that update later. So we're gonna table that until possibly our special meeting on March 29th. So we'll give you a little bit more time. I will say, we're going to have more information at that time on possible grants if we were to choose to renovate. And also, we do have a notice of intent for a lease from the school. So we're looking into the regulations and what we would need to do as a lessor to be able to offer that as an option, so. More information coming at next meeting for that, so that we're fully prepared to start a discussion. And my only other thing, so I did have my first office hours on February 25th. It was a very quiet night, which is just fine. But it is something that I will continue just to give people an opportunity if they have anything they want to talk about, that they can stop in, so. But it was relatively uneventful, which is just fine. Alright, that is all I have. I will open it up for council reports. I'll start to my right with Counselor Trump.
I have nothing to add.
Counselor.
Nothing.
Nothing. I just had to take the library, but I can bring it up then.
Yep, sounds good. Alright. Alright, we've reached the portion of our agenda where we have citizen comments. So here in the city of Albernett, we have two different kinds of comments. Those for agenda-related items, and then non-agenda-related items. If you're actually on the agenda, such as Ryan, you will wait until your agenda item comes up. So during this portion, please, if you have a comment or a question for the council, state your name and address. And you'll be recognized, and you have up to five minutes to address the council. So we'll start with agenda-related items. Are there any public comments? Hearing none? Non-agenda items? Alright, perfect. Written reports. Recognize Chief Graham. Glad you're here tonight, sir.
I centralized the site with me, didn't I? I know, I don't want to go down here, but it was actually Thursday. Um, I did a couple years, I do the call log for the year, and then we do the dollars per call or per service. In total, it's $1,141, minus whatever the catering was for appreciation in here. And then you'll try to check for the difference. You probably haven't done that. We didn't do it last year, we're trying to save our money for this station.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'll explain later. Maybe I didn't check here, and you guys will know, but yeah. We have all that. I just have one copy for you guys. And then, I had on there about the porta tank. It's actually not gonna fit our truck too long. I do have a quote for one that would fit for $1,255.
Is that new?
That's brand new, yes.
Is this a replacement or an addition?
An addition. Only one. Be like handkerchiefs. We have a small one, but that's not feasible.
Did we have that quote? Is that the one she?
No, she just gave you, yes.
I missed.
It's kinda in the middle. Coming down on Hurry Island. The rest, even the north.
How are we doing budget for this year?
Thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eight dollars left.
Okay.
And that's just for the rest of this year.
Everyone here, we've got thirty-one thousand and change to get us through June 30th. Her request is for $1,255 for a porta tank. And also for the thermal imaging?
Yeah, that's on later. We can do it an hour later.
Oh, is it on there?
Yeah. It's on our new business.
Oh, I see it. My apologies. I would so.
Which truck is this going to use?
Uh, V0134, 136. 134 is our tanker. We took our current one off that, but 136, we've got the pumper. And we can get that set up before the tanker arrives. Otherwise, it's a scramble. I'd like to have two, one on each truck, and then you can undo a setup. And have more water on the ground.
How long do those last? Do they, let me, let me freeze that. Do they wear out? Do they crack or anything?
They can. I mean, we'll crack by tar form to underneath them, but I mean, they can get a hole in them. But I, I don't know how well that's when we have this. I have no idea.
They're pretty durable.
We don't use them a whole lot. We don't want to.
Right.
You know, but.
I would entertain a motion for the $1,255 for the porta tank.
Shall move.
Moved by Trump. Seconded by Schatz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Any other questions for Steve?
Steve, what are these other two items on here? The swivel handle.
Um, the swivel handle, uh, the, the swivel on 134 is leaking water. And it's all corroded. And I ordered a new one. We got it. The guy ordered me an on-site. He sent it back, and we have yet to get one. We have built her quite a while now, but I'm not paying it till we got it. And I talked to him today, and he said that the girl that does all this quit. So he thinks it never got done, but he's been checking to it.
What's the next one down?
New trucks, you already bought those a couple months ago. The top ones, I'm not even gonna entertain that one.
Any other questions?
Was that the one for $950?
That was two different styles of swi, or valves.
So we only got to one, and we're not even gonna get the other one?
Uh, no, the other one was a different style. I liked the way it was. He's been both.
Okay, so we.
So I've been, alright, I'm getting the 1450 one. We just haven't got it.
The other one we can forget about.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing on this quote was the, the tank.
Okay.
And then make four for having our state inspection. We're getting ready for that. And I would like to buy a printer, I guess, while I'm talking. Our guy buy me a printer.
We have to get one here, too. Our color printer's been acting up lately, so.
So can we lease those, or did we purchase?
We did purchasing on that, on, for those. The, the big ones on lease, but the, the color printer, we didn't just buy in. And that one's probably five years old, though, I bet. Uh, pretty close to it. So it outlasted most of them of that quality, so. Well, we might try and eat in that cord, but I still don't think it's gonna make it very much longer, so.
Wanna get some numbers for our March 29th meeting?
Yes.
We'll work that out for you.
Do you need a colored one, or just black and white?
Color would be nice, yes, but they have to vary up quickly. Yeah, you know, TJ knows.
I mean, color would be nice, as far as on the fire department side. Color would be nice, so when we do like our flyers, things like that. I hope grab more attention, you know, color catches the eye more than just black and white.
There isn't that much difference in prices, or?
Not anymore, no.
Cause it's.
They're about the same, yeah.
The big thing is the inking.
The biggest thing is the inking. We talked about the refillable ones. We just, I mean, it's a lot of money upfront, but as it dries out, you can switch out the liquid ink port. Or look at something that's like a laser jet or something like that, that's more efficient, that wouldn't dry up as quick. It's one of those we need, but we use it so intermittently. I'm like here, it dries up a lot.
Holding into it too. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Great. Hope it works.
Uh, the only thing I have to add is we had a little water main break Saturday night. There's the leak coming out of the four-inch main. It was on North Street, near 208. And there's, you can't see them all, but there's three big fiber optics about foot away, so, um, we, uh, it was, it was fun. And that tube on the left happens to be the back tube from Roto-Rooter's big back truck. We wound up having to, by the time we found, the kid who was locating for the telephone company would not give us any indication how deep that fiber was for reliability reasons. And by the time we found the, the fiber, we realized we had to be really close to the main. So we just finished sucking out the hole with the back truck and fixed it. Jeremy Hanley was there, and we started, we're ready to dig, but with the fiber that close, that's, who knows what that bill's gonna be, is what I've been getting to. And back trucks are not terribly cheap, especially on Saturday night at seven o'clock when you got there, so.
Cheaper than a fiber optic.
Yeah, cheaper than a fiber optic, absolutely. But it is fixed. It was just split three-fourths of the way around the pipe, so. Other than that, I don't think I have anything to add to my, um, report. You'll see it in the claims list, the grades for the salt and sand spreader that we proved last month. They're finally showed up today, or they got here Friday. I picked them up today, so.
Any questions for us? Thanks, sir.
City Hall. Um, sort of made mention of the mayor's report. The newsletter, the newsletter is changing their publication date from Tuesdays to Thursdays, effective March 18th. It'll be their first Thursday issue. I checked, and we are still okay this month with our budget publications that are required, even though timeline is now again changing, so. But we are still good there. They're also changing their name to the news. They said that they're gonna be doing some updating of what it looks like and stuff, so just kind of be on the lookout for that.
Does that affect our normal publications quite in any ways?
Um, it shouldn't. I just, um, cause it just has to be published within fifteen days, so. It'll just change when it gets published, but it shouldn't change. Also, it has to be in. I did send out new submissions. They're listed there for you, some were first notices, some were second notices. As the weather gets nicer, we'll try to go around and spot check and, and make sure that we're being consistent. But those were ones that we were following up on or had, or given notices about. Um, then I've got some scheduled items coming up listed for you guys to see, and then the stuff that I'm still working on. That's all.
Any questions for Danielle? Excited to get past by. Digging into one of them. Alright, now we move into the consent agenda. Are there any bills added?
There are four. One is for CJ Cooper, in the amount of $85. It's our annual administration fee for the random drug screening. Again, that's CJ Cooper for $85. You should have a copy. And then we have Future Line for $1,203.8. That is for the salt and sand spreader. And then we have Ferguson Envoy for $2,009. That is for six regular-sized water meters. We are currently just put our last meter in. Yep. So we're going to need to have some more on the ready. And then one is an upside meter requested by a homeowner for new construction, and they will be paying for the full amount of that meter because it's in addition to the regular meter.
They're, they're putting irrigation, so they're getting a regular meter and this one-inch meter to run the irrigation, so.
So that was again Ferguson for $2,009 even. And then there's one more from Kirkwood Community College. It looks like they had a training class for winter emergencies that was taken or administered that was for $40. So Kirkwood for $40 for the fire department training.
With that, I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda with the additional bills. Moved by Bozenberg?
Second.
Seconded by West. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, that moves us into new business. And we have Fuller's, their renewal of their annual liquor license. Everything seems in order with that. No changes. They're not here tonight, so I assume it's a, does this as usual request?
Just administrative, so it's a renewal. The motion approved.
Get their insurance. Shall move.
Thank you. Moved by Schatz.
Second.
Seconded by Menson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. ACDC's special event permit. We will recognize Mr. Ryan Young, who is with us tonight. What you got going on, Ryan?
Um, so this year, I gave you two event permits. We're, the parade, as usual, is on one permit, simply for the fact that our second permit, we'd like to move benefit days up to our ACDC Diamond instead of having it here on the road. So I did two permits for the parade, because that will be the only road closure we'll have during the day. And then the second permit for just the event up there, because we won't have any roads closed. We are gonna work on talking with the neighbors around there to make sure that they're okay with having foot traffic through there. We would obviously have no parking on the two streets there. And then we do have parking. We're offering outfield for that event, so. We'll have our liquor, we're planning on liquor sales, too. I haven't submitted for a liquor license yet, but it'll be the same as last year. We'll have to, you know, have you guys approve and stuff like that, so. I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention right now. It's something we have to, you know, move real quick on.
Yeah, well, no, the date is August 7th, so considering plenty of time, and we definitely appreciate that. Events, pretty standard events, as I was planning, same with music and everything later in the evening.
Band and food and stuff like that, kid games and.
You're gonna have it all on the ACDC Diamond?
Yeah. Just the parade will be the only thing that'll be away from the Diamond. There'll be the normal parade that we have around town.
Any alternate plan in case there's rain? I mean, you know, a couple days before and the outfield gets wet?
As of right now, we don't have any alternate plans, though. I don't think we plan on having an alternate. If it rains and it's something we have to cancel and, or downsize.
Use up the.
Downsize it.
You're gonna want some signage to keep people from parking on, on Naylor and Third, then?
Yeah.
Or even just kind of close those streets, so to speak?
Yeah, the only thing, like Third, we probably want, still have access to get it out.
Get people in.
Behind outfield, second park. Other than that, Naylor, you know, could be pretty much closed. Or at least just have a sign or something there.
So that the rest of us could come and go if they need to.
Yep, no parking or whatever.
I'll see what I can come up with.
Okay.
And that's just the curb side signs like we have up?
Yeah, yeah, just use it for the parade for the moment, okay?
Any other questions for Ryan?
Is he looking just to lock in the dates tonight?
That was gonna be my question, because without the insurance stuff, I mean, I don't think we necessarily want to. Do you just want our, our intent to approve?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Lock in the dates.
So I guess I would seek a motion for Ryan to continue planning. Benefit day's currently scheduled for August 7th. And we'll reevaluate when more information is available. Moved by Menson? Seconded by Bozenberg? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
Hope for a more normal year.
Yeah.
All the way around. Alright, 13C, Fire Department Project Request for a thermal imaging camera. Before I turn this over to the chief, I will say, Before I turn this over to the chain, I will say, um, demonstration firsthand of how well this camera works, and I understand why this is on the agenda, so. I will let you go ahead.
Um, the next quote for a thermal imaging camera, um, ours is two thousand and three, I think we got a fire truck and we got it. To make it work, you gotta smack it several times, and then half the time it goes dead, and then you gotta smack it again, and just time for new one. I did look at that one from Hammond Fire. It's a little cheaper, but it didn't have a handle. It just kind of sat in your hand and we didn't really like it that much, but this will be almost identical to what we have. Got a handle, it's a lot fair picture. Now TJ wants to add anything?
No, you pretty much hit it on the head. I mean, it's old equipment, so it's about its life, plus someone, so.
And I assume it's a vital piece that you need.
Fight fire, find the fire in the walls, you find people. Find your dead gear.
Use this fifty percent of the time, twenty-five percent.
Take the heat signature, so, um, it's got three different settings. You know, and the hotter it is, the blacker it is, and then there's some settings that make it colored. Absolutely, yeah. It's definitely, uh, key for firefighting.
And they're not exaggerating about the having hit it. I witnessed it, it does not turn on unless you act it. And shake the whole bit. Is that a this year expense, or is that something that?
Heavy this year expense.
What's the timeframe to get ahold of it, do you know, that they mentioned?
Remember what he said?
Everything seems to be four to six weeks.
Yeah, it's pretty much an immediate order and pretty quick to turn out.
Got another questions?
Didn't you say something about getting in order with one of the other cities?
Yeah.
To make it faster?
No, I thought they had some on hand too, though.
Yeah.
Where you get it from?
Standard Fire.
There are other questions. I would seek a motion for eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for a thermal imaging camera. I mean, we will know this is a, a big truck of year thirty-one to get us through the end of the year, so it's small things.
My next big handy bunker year, and I can order it now, and it can come in in August, you know, I don't know, you know, so I'm just gonna kind of wait.
It's bound to about twenty-one, I hear. I get a motion for the eight thousand quarter and sixty for a thermal imaging camera from Standard Fire Supply. Move by Schatz, second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay? That thing ordered. All right, Board of Adjustments, appointment to fill the vacant seat. Um, so we, we kind of just keep going round robin here, but with TJ joining us on City Council, that has left a vacancy on our Board of Adjustments. We had asked Chris Myers at our last council meeting if he would be interested. Did you double check with him?
I did.
Was that?
He is.
He is still interested in that position? So that is completely at the council's discretion on who we would like on the Board of Adjustments. I would recommend that we move forward with Chris.
Is there anybody else interested?
No, we didn't actually. We didn't canvass, that's, that's one of those, that's our discretion. We recently filled that board with five members, so I think there is one that is only on a one-year term. Since we just got that rotation started, so if someone is interested, they'll have an opportunity in the near term. But for now, I'd like to make sure we have a full slate with that board. Move by Schatz to appoint Chris Myers to our vacancy on the Board of Adjustments, second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now, the last item on new business, I asked Danielle to put this on here, is to discuss our mask mandate here at City Hall. With the availability of vaccine, additionally, the CDC put out updated recommenda- or updated guidance today for anyone who's been fully vaccinated. I don't know if anyone saw that. Fully vaccinated is defined as being two full weeks out from your second dose. So you receive both doses plus two weeks, you're considered fully vaccinated. The CDC is saying that anyone fully vaccinated is allowed to be without mask or social distancing with anyone else. Who has been fully vaccinated, or anyone who is at a low risk of severe disease. Question?
I've been fully vaccinated.
Oh, you're volunteering, good. So with that, I mean, I, I receive comfort knowing that they're seeing the benefits of the vaccine. It's more widely available. Our fire departments received it. The county today opened up a new class, so anyone under the age of sixty-five who has a pre-existing condition is eligible to schedule for their vaccine. So I really think we're on the up and up. Um, so I would just like council's input on how they feel about continuing our mask mandate for, um, meetings and within City Hall, or if we're at a point where we're comfortable making that optional. I know I would prefer to just make it someone's an option and not necessarily mandate it. The weather's getting warmer, we're all outside more, breathing the fresh air, but definitely want to canvass the group on that.
I agree with you. You want a mask, wear a mask. If you don't, don't. What else I'll ask you, Danielle, how do you feel about people coming in here?
I'm comfortable.
Would you prefer the mask or not?
I think it should be up to everybody's discretion. I see people who are more comfortable wearing it, but most people don't feel the need, so we have to put on just because they're a fireman, so. I'm comfortable with it. We put up the sneeze guard, and I've got masks, so.
I see no reason to not keep, I see no reason to change right now, because how many, what percentage of the population's been vaccinated up to this time?
I think I saw, this doesn't speak to Lynn County, I think we saw overall, like US is nine percent, so I'm not sure what Lynn County is.
Yeah, well, does Lynn County still have the overall mask mandate now?
Lynn County does, yes, as well as the City of Cedar Rapids. The governor did drop the statewide mandate, which leaves it at our discretion, which is nice.
I would say, I don't, I mean, I don't know how much foot traffic really comes in and out, but, I mean, I'm assuming it's not a lot. I know, no more than what Lefty's has, and I see plenty of people not wearing their masks from Lefty's, so I think with the smaller amount of people coming in and out, I'd say if you're okay with it, and if you're okay with it, kind of leave it up to individuals.
Your superman over there.
And even as you're vaccinated, you can still carry the COVID, and you can still pass it on to somebody else. So it's not, you can still be a carrier, passing it around.
Does anyone feel strongly about changing it, or do we just leave it the same and, and continue to watch the numbers? I mean, the numbers have declined drastically. I don't know, Joe, what, what would be that threshold that would make you feel better?
I'm not sure.
Not just, sorry.
I don't know how to answer that, but, you know, the government has made things less rigorous now. I feel she's been too lax on this whole thing all the way through. I don't have a lot of confidence in that. Um, I don't know what the threshold is.
Or maybe it's in availability, if it's available to anyone, we get past the tiers.
That makes more sense.
Similar to like a flu shot, you can get it if you wanted at that point.
Yeah.
Talked some good about it, waited out a little bit longer and.
It's play to the next meeting. I've been wearing them for years, so. I still have to wear them at work.
Well, I'd like to keep talking about it, because I think, I think we deserve an opportunity to try to get back to normal, but happy to wait a little bit longer, so. All right, perfect. We move on to old business. So the first item on the agenda for old business is the library service contract. You were all here, thankful, thankful, thank you for being here for the public forum on February twenty-second. We got a lot of good information. I didn't have anyone come into office hours with additional concerns. Any emails we received, we have forwarded along, so you've got the full picture of, um, how residents are feeling. I'm gonna give my opinion. I tried to stay neutral during the public forum, but I do sincerely feel that our current library contract is an unsustainable expense. We've been, we've done our best to try and negotiate. We've made several attempts to offer them different things. All prior negotiations have failed, several of which we, we just got no response. They've been very clear that they expect us to be at parity with the Metro communities in most jurisdictions. I will tell you, I did some more rough calculations, if that's the case. Uh, the lowest per capita is Marion. If they expect us to be at parity with Marion with our renewed census, we're gonna be over thirty-five thousand dollars for this contract, when it renews in two years. If they were to bring us up to parity, so.
Which isn't a fair parity, because Marion is library within their city limits.
They do, and they have, uh, representation on the Board of Directors or on their library board. They have the power to vote for bond issues regarding the library, which we have, we don't have any of that by not being residents of that jurisdiction. I agree. Additionally, they keep, they keep talking about parity and equitability, and I will say, currently Metro has three contracts. They have ours, they have, uh, Robbins, and they have Lynn County. None of those contracts are the same. They're all different, and we pay the highest. Robbins gets a twenty percent discount, but we don't, um, our discount's actually decreasing, and County just sets a dollar amount. They, they don't even have, their, their contract doesn't even resemble ours. Additionally, and just so you guys have all the information, uh, we've talked to Centerpoint, and they are willing to offer services to our residents, uh, to help with convenience. I know that was one of the themes from the public forum, so they are willing to allow us a book drop here in town. It would be at our discretion what that looks like. It would be, we would have to dedicate the resources, whether it be someone who volunteers to return those books, or if we have staff do it, you know, on a regular basis, a couple of times a week, we have to figure that out. But they are willing to allow us that book drop, as well as, and again, this comes back to our discretion, um, the ability to handle holds. So if someone puts a book on hold, they will allow us to pick it up and have it here in town. We would then have to figure out how to facilitate, whether that's to extend City Hall hours a couple of nights a week to allow additional access for those things. But they've really been a great partner in walking through and, and helping us and discussing things. We did attend their meeting tonight. It was right before ours. And they have, they did approve their intent to move forward with the contract, so, um, I think they're just as excited. And they have said with the additional funding, they're not going to use it, um, to replace any of their current budget. They will use it as a supplement or as additional budget, so that they can start adding additional digital resources and other things that they maybe can't, don't have on hand today, so. While I understand, you know, Centerpoint offers many of the same services, they're not at the same scale as the Metro, but they're really gonna be an added partner for the city. They're gonna give us that opportunity to work together and find solutions and get creative, which I love. So. You know, we talked at length at, uh, the public forum about other expenses that are gonna need to come out of the general fund. I mentioned, I also outdoor warning, so I think we just have to be conscious of, of how we're spending that money. We do have, just in case you haven't read the current contract, there is a termination clause in our Metro contract today, where we just provide thirty days written notice. So that's, that's available. We're not breaching any kind of contract. That verbiage is, is very clearly stated, so. Normally, we open for discussion, being that this topic is one that I know it's, it's not gonna be an easy decision for anyone. I know there's a lot involved in it. In order to just determine intention, I would first seek a motion, just to make sure, see if anyone's even interested in moving forward with this, and then we'll move into discussion from there, so. I would first seek a motion to move forward with the library service contract with Centerpoint. Any contracting?
Right.
Yes. Any cities that own their own library. It is different, yes.
But any city that's contracted with them, we are paying them.
More per capita.
More than any than you.
Yes.
So that is a true statement.
Yes. Currently Robbins has a twenty percent discount on, off of what we pay, so they're still at the thirty-three dollars, but then they get a twenty percent discount off of that. And Lynn County's at twenty-two dollars for the county residents. Um, other cities that contract, such as Walker, Prairieburg, Ashford.
Walford?
Walford, they're, they're far below even what our proposal is to Centerpoint.
So we are paying more than, now then is there also a chance, no matter how this shakes out, we could still participate in the metropolitan library system?
That's a great question. We are highly confident that our service would be discontinued with the Metro Library.
Would be discontinued?
Yes, that we would be denied service to the Metro Library. We are, uh, that is not a guarantee. Us, it is not stated in our contract that if we terminate, we are denied service. It still is their choice, but we understand that that is a choice. They will, that their boards will.
But is it their choice, or is it the state of Iowa's choice?
It is their choice. Their boards have to approve that decision, and then they also have, they have to inform the State Library Board, as well as us, of their decision. But it is purely up to their library boards. Now, with that said, uh, a lot of the services that they offer are open to the public. Uh, their rental spaces are open to the public, so it's really the access to the digital resources, as well as being able to check out physical, uh, items. We have seen, I mean, all three of the Metro libraries offer a Quick Card, where you can, I mean, even without proof of address, you can still have access to that catalog, so. There's potential that that's an option, but it's not something I would expect any of our residents to use on a regular basis. That information's on their website, if anyone wants to, wants more details on that, or Danielle, oh, yes, and then TJ, I can recognize you as well. You have additional information from TJ, who had a brilliant idea. So we talked a lot about open access network. Included in that are, are regional universities and colleges, so I'll let you speak on the research that you did there.
So I had an aha moment and was thinking like what other resources would be available, uh, to Alvernet in the event we do decide to switch over. So I just reached out to Kola Mount Mercy, and, um, they're both obviously local. Um, they're open to the public. As of right now, they've got COVID restrictions, but once they open up back to the public, um, both of them, uh, anybody in essence with a driver's license or an ID can use their services. Uh, some of them, you, you can't like check out DVDs or other items like that. But books, uh, you can use their services, their rental space, things like that. My thought behind it was, um, it'd also be geared more towards the adult and high school, uh, population as well, so that would give another access, for those individuals to use higher education, along with just regular, uh, year protection, non-aging. They all do, uh, participate in our library loan, so it'd be just like, uh, what's available now with like the Cedar Rapids or the Metro Library Network. And you can get a book loaned in from another location, which, if I remember right, is the same with Centerpoint.
Yep, Centerpoint did have a limit. I think it's two per month, and then it's, there's a small fee.
Yeah, um, I didn't get what their amount was, like how many you could have per, but, um, these were quick fifteen minute talks, and, um, that's about it. Um, I did go out and look at the Irish City North Liberty, uh, library system. Right now, um, you can't get a library card, because they said we're affiliated with another library network, and the only thing I can assume is that they want us to use their services before theirs. But, uh, anyone with a library card through them, essence gets all the same services, so. I was just kind of looking at this up and down three eighty, you know, we kind of cover all those areas, so.
And one nice thing, you know, I thought of after the fact with the colleges, is they're gonna have extended hours. I know when I went to Mount Mercy, it was seven AM to midnight.
Yeah.
So they've got even more extended hours than your public libraries would.
I haven't got ahold of them yet, um, but I would assume, I mean, it's gotta be something similar, you know, COVID restrictions right now, but I know that probably doesn't address what a lot of this is, it's brought up. But I know that probably doesn't address what a lot of this is, it's brought up at the specialty room. But it's also something that'd be available in the future. And I didn't know about it. Like I said, it was just kind of one of those squirrel moments that I looked up and just called out, so.
Any other questions? So with the CenterPoint, they have the interlibrary and it goes through Metro?
So you could regress through CenterPoint, they can get you a book from Metro? Absolutely. They participate as part of the state program. They get state funding and state reimbursed for interlibrary loans.
And I was just going to ask, what's the Quick Card?
So Danielle has a printout, but you could also check the Metro Library. So there's, there's information out there on their Quick Card. It's at any of the three.
Okay.
If, if I could clarify, interlibrary loan, the request is made at your home library, and that library through a computer system requests that item from anywhere in the state. It does not come directly from the Metro. It comes from the first response library that has the item you're looking for.
But should they find something at Metro, it could, that item would be requested, not guaranteed?
Yes, and it's, it's, they have changed to a whole state delivery system. So it could be, even if the item's available very locally, it could be up to two weeks to get the item.
Okay, thank you. So in our, again, Danielle and I went to CenterPoint's library board meeting tonight. They did unanimously provide intent. We have a few changes we need to make to the contract. So it wasn't a contract approval per se. One thing, and I do agree with them, so our proposal to them is for the 30 cents per thousand. They do want to build in a base cost or like a minimum. Because for example, if you look at next year, our cost dives due to the TIP district. So we'll work together and come up with that amount. So we're not necessarily ready to approve the current contract. I just want to see if, you know, council is interested in continuing to move forward, and I can continue those negotiations. I imagine that base is going to be about where we expect to be, about that $8,000 is what I would recommend for the base. But that way, they're not penalized if we have another TIP district or something like that. So that language would be something similar to, you know, 30 cents per thousand or $8,000, whichever is greater would be what they end up with. And in a normal situation, we're going to be above with the 30 cents. I think that was about the only change. And they have to have their lawyer review it yet, so. We've got the legalities yet, but I would.
Has our order looked at? I mean, you aren't to the point where our order, we need some more to fish yet?
We sent it to him, but he hasn't gotten back to us. And now with the conversation with CenterPoint tonight, we'll definitely put him on a hold on that until we can get those terms ironed out.
I think we need to keep looking at this.
I guess I'll, I'll make a motion to look into this.
I have a motion from, I'll take Trump because he, he threw it out there. Motion from Trump to continue to pursue the contract with CenterPoint. I'll take a second from Shans, and we'll open for discussion. Does anyone have any discussion they want to add?
I know the people I've talked to, I've kind of reached out here and there as I came across people, and for the most part, it was mixed. But at the same time, a lot of them, if they were for or against it, still brought up the fact that what we're spending on it, they felt was a little, not outrageous, but it was shocking. And that's a wide range of ages, so it wasn't just like my street or anything like that. It was people from different ages, all everything, so.
Danielle stated last meeting that the Dropbox is like $2,000 or something like that, but she's come up with a different price?
I got a quote from IPI on a Dropbox, and it's around $800. If we did decide to afford with the contract and we wanted to go Dropbox, then just the cost could be our expense. We could look at getting a grant for it. Walker, when they, they contracted with CenterPoint, they got a Dropbox put in when they did their contract. And it was through the Lynn County Community Grant Fund. But anyway, so there's a Dropbox that looks kind of like this, if you can see it. There's a little cart in there. A metal Dropbox is made for outdoors. It's around $800. And we have different color options. I know you're all very excited about that. I asked about tie eye. They said they can do pop the color. I didn't know what anybody's preference would be, so I just threw that out there. If, you know, we did move forward, we wanted to get Dropbox. There are options for color, and it's about $800. And we have the tools to be able to anchor and cement. So I don't know where we would want to put it. And this is, it looked a little large in size. They said we could modify the size if we wanted to make it smaller or something. I don't know if the cost would be.
What slide are you talking about?
Well, this says, no, I'm not going to look.
Looks like it's total, 44 inches high and...
It looks like a mailbox.
Yeah, it is really like a mailbox.
It's pretty wide, but.
Yeah, it's fairly wide. I'm going to say it looks like there's a lot of inches there.
Someone could hide it and jump out at you.
It's two and a half feet wide.
We can narrow that down.
Somebody has a key, get inside.
It was all, it would be similar to the outside mailbox, but.
Yeah, it would be a little bigger than that, but more secure.
We'd have to, we can continue to look. If it's anything like what we want CenterPoint has, it's substantial. And I just don't know with our current location if we've got a great place to put it, so we can keep looking. Important note on that is that we would have to dedicate the resources to return those books. It's on us. But again, I think that helps answer some of the convenience if we're able to offer that. Same with pickups. We've looked at, you know, extending city hall hours a couple of nights a week. If we were to have, if we do choose to renovate any kind of city hall, if we had like a foyer, we could get, we found some lockers where you can custom code the, each one. So we could just submit whoever requests the book to be on hold, give them locker number and the code. So we'd have a way of making that even more accessible. That just wouldn't be a right now answer, but definitely something we can work towards. They probably, given that, they probably have to be like in a foyer. Like you look at the bank that has the ATM in the foyer, but then the building's locked. So that'd be if we were to renovate, or maybe we have a space that, I don't know. We'd have to work through that. Any further discussion? I would look for all those in favor to continue the negotiations on the library contract with CenterPoint. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
I have to abstain, conflict of interest with my employer.
Thank you, sir. Please note, one abstain. Four ayes, motion carries. So we will keep you abreast on negotiations there. All right. 14B, FY22 budget motion to set the public hearing. We don't have a lot of wiggle room on this, so we are looking at March 29th, which is another Monday. This will be a special meeting in order for us to make the March 31st submission deadline with the auditor. So I would seek a motion to set the FY22 public hearing for Monday, March 29th at 7:00 PM. Moved by Menson. Second by Bozenberg. No further discussion. If everyone's available, please mark your calendars. All of them in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Roosevelt Street overlay. I will recognize Guy Trimble.
We got a quote for this, and I'm really looking for approval. The thought process was get the fire station project done, truck traffic, et cetera. It's disintegrating out there. If you've driven on it, I think we need to do it. I feel like we've looked at budgeting and, and with the bond and et cetera, and the money is there. I'm not looking for approval tonight. What I want is to have them freshen up the quote to make sure that it's correct and basically get on their list so that we aren't seeing them in July. Was my motivation for having it on the, on the agenda tonight. So the intent was to not deal with it until the fire station was completely done, paid for. But I think we need to get on their list. It's gotten late enough this spring. We need to make sure it doesn't pass us by, so.
So it's actually a two-page quote, just so you're not misleading by the first number. That's very nicely printed.
Yeah, that's curving gutter from where our curb stops to Longworth on the north side. So that'd be about three foot of concrete with the curb, obviously on the backside. And then the overlay would be, would butt up to that and go all the way out to where the county's concrete overlay stops, or, yeah, stops.
So they dig out, new soft spots to repair.
Yep, yep, yep. There's a line item in that quote for compact and, you know, as terrifying compact as necessary. And that's what they would do in those areas. Then they got to grade out to a butt to the, the concrete on both sides so that, grind it down so that it meets and is level and flush.
I see it's three-inch curbs. Was that their idea? I don't think that's a good idea. It should go four-inch minimum.
Okay. When I have freshened it up, oh.
You hit a three-inch curb with your pug, you're going to bust that curb off.
Okay. Yep, I guess I didn't even realize.
And I'm assuming it's a six-inch tall curb?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you want.
Yeah, we talked about that.
You want to be four-inch on top at least.
Okay. I will talk with him when I ask him to freshen it up.
Which I don't think, that's not going to be much. That's going to be three yards of concrete.
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely. And if you didn't notice, when they shot the, in that curb, in, in the curb in gutter, when they shot the, the area with their, their later level, the water can't all go down to Longworth or to our culvert that we just put in across Roosevelt. So there's a, there's a drain. They're going to have to put in an intake, and they're going to have to run a pipe over to the drain that's in between those two houses right by our fire hydrant in order to get all the stormwater. So, which I'm happy with. They're not going to, it's not going to pool on us. It's, they're not going to try and attempt something that's going to be sketchy. They just said it's not going to go there. So they'll put in a pipe and hook it into that drainage tube which dumps in that ditch by our culvert. So stormwater will be handled, so I was very happy with that part of it. I will, if you agree, I will have them freshen it up and maybe be on that March 29th special. About warranty? And it'd be the same as anything we've ever done, so, yeah.
I see the, the back fill item. Do we have dirt? Do you have excess dirt?
I don't have excess, but I could probably come up with enough in that scenario to do it, yeah.
Worst-case scenario, you can probably use compost.
Oh, absolutely, or a mix of what dirt I do have with compost, yeah. Absolutely. Which will be generating more as soon as it dries up and the grinder shows back up, so. Absolutely.
Do you need a motion on this, or just a nod to get an updated quote?
Yeah, that's probably just a nod. Nobody's in a po, in opposition. I don't think there's a need for a motion. I'll just kind of get on their list, freshen up the quote, and maybe put it on that March 29th meeting. And that way we'll be through with the rest of, probably the final payments on the fire station. We'll know exactly where we're at with the financial part of it, too, so.
Because we hoping to fund this from?
We were, the intention was the, the amount of money that we bonded for the station had enough slack in it to, to cover this part of the street as well, yeah.
Have them give you a price for peanut grit on the bad spots.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Now that might be a little spendy just to warn them.
Yep, gotcha.
Numbers don't hurt.
How much would it cost for us to seed it?
To what?
To seed? Says we're charged for seeding?
Oh, that's, that's all right. I'm going to be seeding all over the place.
Okay, so it'll already be part of, okay.
Yeah, peanuts compared to the rest of the market, no problem.
All right. First, I can see you getting marching orders on that. We'll move on to 14B, which is the new fire station project update. There's several items on here, so let's just go through them one at a time. Do, guy, want to go ahead and start with the update first?
Yeah, there's still punchless items. The county inspectors came out and found a few things. You know, some of them were dressed immediately, others are still awaiting, nothing major. Some of it will dry out till closer to warm weather because we need the warm weather to do it. Putting in bollards on the backside of the building by the air conditioner and the gas valve, for example. There was some electrical stuff inside. There's a little plumbing stuff inside. None of it, none of it is concerning whatsoever. There's still a few punchless items from our walk-through that we're either waiting for pieces or we're, they just haven't been there to do it. Again, not problematic. The only issue right now is simply the concrete ceiling on the floor. There was some contamination under the ceiling in one spot, and they're not exactly sure what happened in the other spot. Wondering if when the floor heat was turned on, it forced moisture to migrate up through the concrete even though it was well cured? Don't know. Point being, when the rep came to look at it, he said they could definitely grind off those areas and fix them, but it would look completely different than the rest of the building. Because by the time they got all the old ceiling ground off, it would be down to aggregate in a lot of areas. And so I basically told them, then you're going to have to do the entire apparatus day, and they agreed. So that's supposed to happen this week. We've been battling with whether the fire department should move in or not. If they moved in and the, the other option was April, then they'd have to completely move out gear and trucks to give that thing at least a week to do it and let it cure. So they're coming this week, and unless something falls apart, it, it basically, one week from the day that they show up, they should be able to move in. It's the way it sits right now. Substantial completion paperwork has been signed, sent off. The warranty has started. All these items I'm talking about were from, were punchless items and inspection items, so that's not a warranty, so to speak. Other than that, we're just going to have to learn the facility, I think, at this point. I think we're at that point. Been doing a lot of lock programming and, and that kind of thing, and I think we, we're close to having that ironed out, so.
So we'll get you a calendar date for moving here before too long. Convenience lined up.
We moved over there, just wait for the big stuff to go.
Yeah.
It's exciting.
Gotcha. Awesome.
Item two is security cameras, so we had seen a quote at the last meeting, and we asked Guy to get at least one more. So you do have one in front of you from Hawkeye.
Yes.
I'll let you speak to it since you spoke to the gentleman. And you also included, was the one from Mike also on the packet?
I think I just had it on the online.
On the online one, all right. I don't need it, but we just might need to refresh on the amount, the difference.
So this quote is, is, everybody's got a different opinion on where cameras should be placed. I think this is two cameras less than what Mike quoted, but there's a substantially larger hard drive. And I got the feeling that this gentleman from Hawkeye has done this long enough. It seemed to me his camera placement might have been a little bit more ideal for seeing a lot of things. So, and obviously cheaper, you know, we're nearly $2,000 less money. I think it's kind of a no-brainer to go with Hawkeye on this.
It also includes the display monitor that would be on site.
And I have absolutely nothing bad to say about Mike. He was in today and was almost kind of relieved that maybe there was a cheaper bid out there. These guys do this all day long, every day. Mike and his partner do it occasionally. So, and just real quick diversion here. We got the last piece necessary for wifi at the station today. So probably before the end of the week, they'll be, the internet will be operating out there. So I wanted to throw that out there. The, the other thing that came about with this meeting, besides the cameras, was that kind of goes along with the camera, is he said a lot of times they put burglar alarms in facilities like this because your camera's going to show you what happened, but it's going to be after the fact. Burglar alarm, obviously, if someone cracks a door, you're going to, you're going to know somebody's there doing it right there at that moment in time. I get, I get his point. In my opinion, we don't need to be paying that much money plus $47 a month for a burglar, burglar alarm in the fire station. I mean, yes, there's some stuff that's valuable in there that people might want to get, but it's well lit, it's on a major road. And if you. And if you do choose to, it's pretty secure. Everything is state-of-the-art. I, I honestly, besides that, false alarms, you know, doors just not getting pulled shut as guys are leaving in a hurry might cause us fits. Um, I threw it on there because he brought it up and I wanted to get your opinion on it. I, I'm not a fan. Hopefully I'm filling my words here, but, uh, and we have trouble, but just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, we felt we also go to Lynn County.
Yeah, you can set it up.
Fire off if it got set off and who knows where they're gonna be.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, you don't want three fake calls out there and they're gonna be on you.
Yeah. But, yeah, and forty-seven dollars a month isn't much, but it's forty-seven dollars a month, you know, for the monitoring and, um.
Be over five hundred a year.
Yeah, it, it just, I mean, it's coming down the list, but I got more information on fire alarms from these guys too. And, and to me, that might be my better spent than a burglar alarm. But, um, I would recommend on the camera, back to the camera part, wanted you to consider the, the burglar alarm just 'cause it got brought up. Um, but it would be my recommendation and we go without that communication on cameras if you choose to put cameras in the facility. There's no monthly ongoing clause. I feel free about his camera placement and that's their sole business. That's different. That's.
Have you seen any pictures from the cameras?
What's that, huh?
That they use? Have you seen any pictures?
No, no, I didn't see.
Just kinda curious how, the definition of, of the cameras.
He was speaking a lot to the, to the placement as far as you can put one here. You're not gonna see the face of the guy over here because it's too far away, but you're certainly gonna see it right here. And that's part of what made me feel more comfortable about his camera placement would be, he, he was putting them where it would do us the most good. So, yeah. I just spoke to him on Thursday or Friday, so I didn't get a chance to dig in deeper, but.
And it does say the system. So he's quoted us at twelve, uh, high-resolution cameras. It can be expanded to as much as sixteen. He's given us the per-camera price as well if we wanna add more. So it's, it's a, we have room to grow. Room to grow within the system if we find a dead spot or something that we feel we need to add in. So.
I agree.
Did you do our cameras at work and they're pretty clear? I don't know what kind we have, but it was monitored up in the building. Anything, it's really pretty good.
I know where I used to work, they had cameras and you should see it just in there.
Is for what? No, not really burglar, anything, you know, um, if we're gonna damage. If somebody wheels in there and spins a donut and runs into the side of the building and drives off, we got a chance at, at catching them and getting their insurance. If somebody is vandalizing things. Inside and out.
A few years ago, we were at a call. We had some money stolen out of somebody's wallet. We talked about it back then. And it really did nothing, but we wanna make sure we're covered in the new station.
But sometimes they fly out of there and the doors stay open because they don't know who else is coming. And that's the way they should be able to operate, you know? But that happened and, and there's gonna be things in that station that they aren't always on the truck that are gonna be valuable enough to steal too. Same scenario, uh, pieces of equipment that aren't necessarily with them all the time. So. Well, yeah.
Good entertainment.
Yeah, yeah. And, and if you do wind up renting the meeting room out, you know, and it winds up, then, eh, eh, then there's damage and you say to the renter, hey, what happened to the kitchen counter? And they're like, that wasn't us. Then you'll probably have an idea whether somebody else came in or, or whatever too. So it's for a lot of reasons.
Okay, any other questions about the security cameras? So as you mentioned, uh, we could pull up the other quote, but I do think, uh, Mike was right around two thousand higher, so he was about ninety-five hundred for the same setup.
Ninety-six thirty-eight.
Yeah, see, close. So I would seek a motion.
Make a motion.
To approve the Hawkeye contract? We have a motion to approve the Hawkeye communications camera installation by both of us, second by Sean's. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Fire alarm monitoring system. I'm gonna draw your memories on this. Um, we talked about it last meeting and the discussion is with the fiber optic connection, that the connection is too fast for the alarm, which seems counterintuitive. And we were quoted about eight hundred and fifty dollars a year for monitoring of that through their system. In talking with Hawkeye Communication, uh, he offered up a solution. That which you're handing out or is it?
Yep, this is the, the quote that just came in. That's why it wasn't in the packet. I just got it from it today. He walked in and saw that alarm and he's like, are you monitoring that? And I said, well, we talked about it. It's pretty expensive. Oh, I, let me work on it. He said he is pretty confident. So. Um, and I told him about the problem with, you know, having too fast a phone line. So that was part of the reason it took till today to get the quote, 'cause he had to add in the, the cellular dialer. So three hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the dialer install, ready to go. Possibly more if we had to put a remote antenna if we didn't have good enough service. And then the monitoring itself, five hundred and sixty-four dollars for the year, which amounts to forty-some dollars a, a month. Um, and I spoke with Chris at the insurance office. And if we were monitoring the fire alarm, we'd get about a five percent discount on the premium, which would be about a hundred and thirty-five dollars a year. So you could essentially say that it's a little over four hundred to monitor the station. The dialer should be a one-time expense until it either goes bad or the technology is, has, eh, you know, increased enough that we have to go upgrade to the newer, newer dialer. That was a totally unexpected second opinion on that alarm. I thought we were just stuck with Midwest alarms who put the alarm system in, but.
So what was their cost again?
That would've been eight hundred. It was, um, eight hundred and sixty dollars to put the, oh, yeah, a year for, and plus another eight hundred dollars for the, the installer. So it's considerably cheaper. I, I personally am still on the fence whether we really need it with a brand-new building, you know, um, you know, it's, that one's hard to me, you know? Fires are devastating and they, we know they can happen, but, um, I don't know. I don't know what to tell you. That's.
And if it's in our own station, it's not as though we can respond, I guess. I mean, you're, you're depending on someone else to come out. So does, does the monitoring, I don't know how much time that would save. If, if we can give a, an estimate on that, but.
Yeah, it'd be nearly instantaneous compared to no monitoring because if, if someone, you know, if it, fire starts late in the day and, um, you know, no one's there and they don't have a call, who knows how long it'll take before someone would see it, even with the lights going off and the sirens inside sounding. I mean, they're very important from the standpoint, if there's someone in the building and a fire starts, they're gonna know to get the heck out of there. But, um, yeah, it, it's the unattended portion of it where this would be, be, you know, have its purpose, I guess. So I was the most, then again, five percent of the premium is probably fairly genuine, generous, I guess. I, I thought maybe it might be more, more of a discount on the premium to have a monitored fire alarm system. But that's what she told me.
Would we need one if we're gonna look at, like, renting out the whole station?
Not for the monitor. That's more if it's, if, if there's nobody there. We've got the fire alarm system.
No, yeah, I know that. I did know if it would be something that we would almost be required to do if.
I don't imagine.
We're gonna be renting them out. I think so.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be alarmed if they're in the building. It's more so if there's no one there. We'd get a phone call.
Not really. I mean, most of our stuff in there is gonna be diesel. It's resistant, but I mean, for the most part, it's gonna stay in the kitchen meeting area. It might travel upstairs, but would they be in a metal building?
There's a two-hour firewall between the, the meeting room area and the apparatus bay. Um.
So it wouldn't burn down to your meeting room when you're at apparatus bay. With tins and everything and.
And they're training. They have access to not play with matches. So.
Yeah, and like all the air tanks and everything are high heat rated anyways, so. I mean, the only thing we'd have to worry about, I would say, electrical wise would be the pump for the, like, uh, fill station that's upstairs.
It, it really is. I mean, it, it just, how, what, what do you think the odds are that a fire might get started in that building? I think that's the way I look at it. I mean, is that a, is it almost a near impossibility? Or, or is it more prevalent of a problem than we think? Again, if you, you know, it'd have to be a firefighter event where you left a crock pot plugged in and on and unattended. Or, you know, we don't allow, we're not gonna allow smoking in the building, so we know that's not gonna be an issue. Um, you know, does somebody fire a copy pot and it shorts out right after the leak? But that can happen in anyone's home in any, you know, right here in, in this building too, where not alarmed or monitored. Oh, that's right, because of the extra wiring.
There has been fire stations burned down all the night, just out of blue in the United States. I mean, it does happen.
So Steve, what do you think?
I'd say no, but I think it's wasting money.
I was saying, when you, if it was like electrical fire or something like that, you kind of, you know, warranty with installer anyway for a period of time.
Yeah.
So I mean, for a few years, you've already covered.
That place had worked down a long time ago.
Have smoke detectors in there? Maybe.
Yeah. It, yeah, I, I just feel like it, it's again, another monthly fee that we don't need to incur plus the, the cost of putting a dialer in. But it's totally your choice.
Unless anyone feels strongly, I would recommend we table this. And it's not anything we have to do right away. It was just nice to get a second quote. It was kind of unexpected. It just came up in conversations.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Unless anyone feels strongly, I, I would seek a motion if anyone wanted to move forward. Hearing none, we'll table that. We could keep the quote on even. Dumpster service.
Uh, just made a couple of quick phone calls. I think we're getting close to needing one out at the fire station. Rudd is a two-yard dumpster for a hundred and five a month. They dump it every week no matter what. ABC has a two-yard dumpster. It's either fifty-seven, roughly fifty-seven seventy or something like that to dump it once a month or eighty dollars to dump it ev- once every two weeks. And then if it got to be a weekly dump, it would match for us price, one oh five. So, um, and, and we can go, we don't, if we need to dump more than once a month, we don't necessarily have to move up to that once every two-week schedule. Like, if there's a lot of stuff going on and you get it full, we can call them and say, hey, give us an extra one this month and then go back to once a month. I feel like that's, once a month would be.
Yeah, I can't see it unless there's a fundraiser or something.
Yeah, right. But, and that's the week, that's the month you call them and say, hey, come and dump it in extra time. I, I feel like ABC would be the best, uh, bet for servicing. How would you, would you think, yeah?
Take a motion. Move ahead with ABC disposal for a dumpster at the new fire station. At fifty-seven seventy a month.
Yeah, and both of them have a fee.
For a one ti- for once a month tipping is fifty-seven seventy.
Both of them will have a, uh, it's a fifty-dollar fee to set the, the dump to deliver and drop it.
Good side, extra cost for a dumpster, you know?
It, it would be the, the twenty-three bucks to go from fifty-seven up to eighty. Yeah.
So if we did twice a month, it's eighty. If we go to weekly, then it's, it matches. But we have flexibility with ABC.
Yeah, Rudd, I said, can you? Nope. One oh five, dump it every week. So, you know, no way over a month, whatever. So.
Take a motion?
Yep, I'll move.
Move by Bosberg?
Second by West.
You good? Oh, with ABC?
Here, five, fifty-seven fifteen.
Perfect. Still second that? So awesome. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Make sure that has a camera on it.
Yeah, we, we talked about that a little earlier on cameras. Yeah.
All right, community room, uh, rental policy and price. I don't believe we're asking for any decision tonight. You want me to speak on this? Uh, Danielle and I are starting to look at what some other surrounding communities do. We've gotten interest in renting the community room. Um, and I think it's something we need to be prepared for. One of the biggest asks is, uh, graduation parties coming up and I think that's a great use for the facility. So we are working on, um, the contract that goes along with it, having our lawyer draft something up there as well as pricing, whether we want residential versus non-residential, you know, different options, alcohol policies, those types of things. So definitely beginning support work on that, deposits, how they go about scheduling, those types of things. So we'll have more information soon, but we'd like to get that out so that people can start taking advantage of that and then that becomes a little bit more revenue for us as well. It is. So the way that it works, uh, it's completely locked normally. You can't even get into the building. And then the doors to the fire station into the apparatus bay are a different security than getting into the building. So how the security would work is that we can issue, um, even one-time codes or a code that is good for a certain amount of time. So if they have it rented for the day, we give them, we assign that renter a code, a keypad code, and they dial it in and that opens it for the day or even just once. And that's actually already been tested. And that just gives them access to the meeting room. The chief's office has a separate, right there, is that a key lock?
Key lock.
Yep. So he's, his office is secured and then the apparatus bay is completely secured separately from that. So they have complete access.
I haven't been out there. This access door you're talking about, every time you walk in, it gets punch code in? You know, let's say you're having a graduation party. Do they have to punch code in?
No, no, you can bar it down from the inside. It's a crash bar on the inside. So if you give them the code and they're gonna have a three-hour event, you, I can do two things with the programming. I can either program it so it stays open for that three hours or if it's like a repeat user that you're not worried about, you just tell them to bar it down so, basically so that it stays open and then that's part of their checklist is to unbar it before they leave.
You have to let someone warn them.
Yeah.
And we fully anticipate, um, before rentals, you know, someone will have to stop out, certify the condition that it was left in, whether, you know, firefighters had training or whatever, uh, and then same when someone has left. Just go out and check the condition. So we'll work through all of that and what that looks like.
I got a question for Steve. How much of your utensils that are in your kitchen do you, you know how people are? They, they roll in and they're gonna have some food in there. They're gonna look in every drawer if they forgot a serving spoon. Is that a i- issue for you? Or if we're gonna rent that space out, do you want your fire department stuff locked away? You know what I'm saying? Or maybe it's for you to bring up with the rest of your crew to.
I mean, there're gonna be plates and stuff in there and, I mean, I hate to have to move it every time we need to.
No, I get it, but I'm wondering if we could install some locks on some cabinets, you know? And then that way, if you had stuff you didn't wanna do by the public, we put it, make it a lockable cabinet possibly. I, I don't know. I was thinking about that the other day, 'cause you know what'll happen.
Yeah.
Right, right. And is it a big enough deal to worry about? Or do you just say, please make sure if you use any utensils that are washed and put back where you found them in the, in the policy that you're thinking about? I just had that thought the other day. So.
If anything, we do have the checklist, part of the checklist. I mean, something like the Airbnbs. You have to make sure there's fifteen cups or whatever, you know?
Yeah.
And then have a charge for one missing, two hundred dollars.
Sure.
Sounds good to me.
Those were essential, that's all.
Then we don't have to worry about keeping a key or losing a key and then we can't get to our coffee and whatever.
Give it some thought, 'cause there are, you know, lots of copies.
Yeah. I know, like, uh, we're volunteer miracles. We have to have additional insurance for certain events. Was that something that we would have to have?
So given our municipal insurance, we're already covered. So even if we have like a park, uh, we're not liable for injuries. So that's already under our blanket. Yeah, great question.
Municipality insurance policies are way different.
That's what I thought.
And our, our agreement will have indemnification on all that kind of stuff too, so they're, they're gonna have to sign all that away. We're working on that. Hopefully we can move ahead soon because I've received several requests. Um, I do wanna be clear, that's just for the community room. I'm sure there will be bigger events that people are maybe gonna be interested in, you know, that. that people are maybe going to be interested in, you know, the, the Bay area, but that's not anything that we're entertaining at this time, so this will just be for the, the secureable community room. Uh, next item is open house, I don't know anything about this, it'll be. You guys set a date at your meeting, right, for an open house tentative, or was that?
Maybe. Do you remember?
May eighth.
May eighth, may, may be possible, I think you're right.
What time would you do that, I mean, just.
Yep.
It's probably my calendar.
It is, it's my.
What day is that?
Uh, Saturday.
It's like a two, three hour, four hour.
Right, something in the afternoon. You have to listen complete by then.
Come and go type scenario.
Which is kind of.
We'll hammer out the details on that and get it posted and publicized and, uh, probably a little closer to the date, we'll pursue that.
We have had interest from the Lynn's that are about wanting to know when that day is set so that they can come out and do some media coverage on it.
And we may hand them out before that, just so they're not in the middle of, I mean, they can come for both, but it might be nice to.
They're, I mean, show up a little bit. For a meeting.
April?
March.
March.
For our next county meeting.
So there you go.
Does that going to be in collaboration with like a ribbon cutting? Or would we might do, 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 uh, separate for that?
We'll take that offline. I may, may not be available on the eighth, so we may, we'll have to do something separate, I think.
Okay, I'm still not sure if the fire department collaborating to do, or we could like open house or if they were to do it to separate.
We'll work on that. All right, signage, monument, pavers, et cetera, I think we have an update on this or is this just to keep it in front of us?
Steve, you had Corey Cooper, I showed him around that day, he came out to give the fire department a price on this, uh, monument type sign out in the front, right, which I'm assuming he hasn't got back to you. He did mention to me, which I don't know if he talked to you after the fact, but he did mention to me that, I know at one time we talked about maybe there would be a sign in that wall in that front hallway that you could see through the glass, it was his opinion that you'd never see it through the glass ever, even with lights on, because there's not a light that stays on there when it gets dark and the glare, it wouldn't be too much to see it during the daytime. He did however mention while we were standing there looking at it, that it might not hurt to put on the glass by that front door, you know, Auburn at Autogree Fire or whatever, however you're going to say it, but also basically put a little disclaimer, in case of emergency, call nine-one-one, this station is not staffed twenty-four hours a day. Which Corey's a firefighter as well and he's made that sign for other departments, so he was wondering if that should be something considered. I wanted to ask your opinion of that.
Yeah, that's what our action machine says right now.
Oh, does it? Okay, okay.
Also, I was thinking about the sign as two, uh, street address number, put it outside somewhere?
Yeah, yeah, um, HUP is coming with a temporary address number to get out front as soon as possible. And then I kind of wanted, since Corey was out, I kind of wanted to know where, whether you guys were going to go ahead and if that would be included in that signage before we get carried away doing other address signage, like. I, yeah, she has lots of ideas.
So.
Basically, the address needs to be displayed somewhere and if you're going to put up a, a monument sign and it can be included in that, that takes care of both of it, but if it can't, that's fine, we'll put it somewhere else, but.
Is this the signage that you're going to see right from the road then, or?
In between the two driveways, right? Yeah. And there's, there's a power conduit going out there and the communications conduit, so, and then, you know, again, even if you built something modular, so to speak, if it's just a static sign with lights on it, fine, but if you wanted to make it so that it could be upgraded to an electronic sign, I don't know what you guys would need with an electronic sign out there, but it's.
Kind of the fire department dinner.
Yeah. I mean, it's possible because the conduit is there to do it, is what I'm saying, so. Yeah, uh, there's been some talk about, uh, trying to find a company that could make us some papers with names of the larger donators on it and then maybe possibly to push that donation envelope a little bit further, if somebody wants to have their name on a paper in some area out probably east of the building, um, where the flagpole will go and et cetera. And want to throw that out for interest. You know, obviously, we've had some, some very generous donators that should, should get recognized some way, shape or form, whether it's maybe inside and outside, um, but if you make the area right, you could go a little deeper, you know, uh, on the donation part of it, there's spaces to buy papers to put them in, so.
Are you guys going to apply for like dedication and all that stuff too? I know at one time Charlie talked about it, I don't know.
I think we need to get back after all that kind of stuff, so.
I don't know what the plan is for that, what's that area called, between the two parkings?
Oh, the, yeah, just.
If the plan is, it's got benches and trees and a five wall and right now it's got nothing, so I don't know what the thought was. I don't know if I have ever had plans or, is there any one to discuss options with, um?
They kind of make a memorial, like, Charlie kind of like a veterans memorial or something, or, I, I mean, I don't know.
Well, as soon as the weather breaks, I'm, I'm going to sod it so that it's not a very grassy area. And that doesn't mean it has to just stay all grass, it, it just needs to be.
Yeah.
Presentable, you know, so we'll get it sodded, but, um, where you go from there is sky's limit really, whatever you want to do. And the other thing that I talked briefly with Corey about was in the renderings, there is some letters, like raised metal letters on the east end of the building.
We took them out, because why does Josh and, and what's his name?
Yeah.
Want to see it, so, I, I wanted it across the front and they said they couldn't do it.
Yeah.
Yes, if there's no point in putting on the east side of the building.
Yeah, because just the few people in part right there walked up, we're going to see it. And Josh don't need information, Heather don't need it, read what's, what their next door neighbor is.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like I will work with probably the three of you, we can start getting some pricing and ideas for signage and plaques and memorials and all that kind of stuff and we'll get a plan hammered out and bring it back to council.
You guys had some room in your budget, right, for this sign out front, right, that was one of the things.
Yeah, we were talking about that, yeah.
Yeah, but as far as plaques and, yeah, so we can do a little more research on what it takes to get a paper made. You know, like how many letters cost how much and whatever and see if we can work into something.
I think any of your monument companies, like your greenstone type, they, they do rocks and pavers and all that kind of stuff, so.
They'll do it all, so. Cool.
All right, finally, old business, ECI cog, I do not have an update, do you want to add anything? Um, I'll follow up with them, but yeah, we're at a point where we should hopefully get started soon. All right, so no update there. Final comments, I do not have any, I'll start with Council West, Menson, who else? All right, that I see most of you returned, moved by Menson. Second by everybody, Trum, all those in favor say aye. All right, opposed, nay, motion carries, thank you all.